...his resurrection. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to serve our county. Lord, thank you for allowing imperfect vessels to do your work, Lord, and please mold us and make us, Lord, the best we can be for this county. Help our decisions to be guided by you. Help us to be fair and honest in our decision-making processes with integrity. Look after our county employees. Look after our deputies. Look after EMS personnel, our volunteer firefighters, Lord, and our EMS workers, Lord. Help our educators to do the very best they can with our children for great success there. For all the avenues that we pursue, Lord, in regards to taking care of each other and others, Lord, let us do it in a way that would please you. Forgive us when we fail in those areas, Lord. And, Lord, please look after our county, our local municipalities, and our country. In God's name I pray, in Jesus Christ. Amen.
All right. The first item on our agenda tonight is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any additions to the agenda they want to bring forward?
Mr. Chairman, before we do the approve of the agenda, I would like to bring up an item from item 27, Any Other Matters, to before the item 26, Commissioners' Comments.
We'll make that change. Any other matters will come up before the presentation of the commissioners at the end of the meeting. All right. Is there anything else?
It is, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before we get to the, we're going to do the approval of the agenda right now, correct?
That's the next item on the agenda, is the consent agenda.
Before we do that, I'd like to clarify something, please. If I could have that clarified by the county manager.
Yes.
Under item four, Resolution to Reduce the Salary of Elected Officials, I'd like to have our county manager explain exactly what that means.
Would you like to pull item four?
No, I'd just like the explanation, and then I think that'll be fine.
Okay.
I appreciate Commissioner Williford asking this question because it gives me a chance to explain something that's not always totally straightforward. So, state statute gives commissioners the authority, the power, to set the salary of other county-elected officials, the sheriff and the register of deeds. And not knowing who may file or who may get elected, the historic practice of the county is to, at that point of the election, to reduce the salary of each of those positions, and the register of deeds is not up this time, to the minimum of the salary range, to preserve the board's ability to then put the salary of whoever gets elected at the appropriate place within the salary range. Because once a person, an elected official, is seated, you're no longer able to reduce their salary if you think their experience, for example, is lower than, you know, the incumbent. Does that make sense?
It does, and I wanted the full board and also the public to understand exactly what that meant, because I do not think it was explained well in my package.
Sure. And we'll try to make that clear moving forward. The goal is not to reduce anybody's salary, but just to preserve the board's prerogative to set the salary of whoever gets elected into each of those roles that I mentioned.
And this will not become an issue until next November?
Correct. We were working ahead and just making sure that we had this resolution passed prior to filing period opening up.
And this is nothing new. This is
We've been doing this for a long time.
Standard procedure.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we're called for a motion to approve the agenda as noted. Move an item 27 to in front of item 26.
I'll move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion on second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hear none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. Thank you. Now, we move on to introductions, recognition, recognitions, and presentations. Number, we just approved it. Oh, we approved, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Yeah. I jumped ahead of myself. We approved the agenda. We didn't approve the consent agenda. Is there any other questions on the consent agenda? If not, what is the pleasure of the board in regard to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hear none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. Now, we get to introductions, recognitions, and presentations. And the first introduction is, well, presenter is Gary Bowen. Gary, if you will come forward, and I think you're here to introduce Joshua Robertson as our Assistant Facility Maintenance Director.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everybody. Yes, I'm here, a new position, Assistant Facility Maintenance Director here for Granville County. Mr. Joshua Robertson, he's got approximately 20 years of experience in commercial and facility maintenance, wastewater. His latest job is working downtown Raleigh for a company, Highwoods, on all the high-rise buildings down there. And I'm thankful to have him here. Welcome aboard, Josh. I really appreciate it. And thank y'all for having the position. I'll let him tell you a little something about himself. I want to thank Precious Daniel because she really helped me on getting all the applicants. We had a lot of people that we interviewed, and we had to narrow it down, and she was a big help on doing that. Joshua, congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Gary. So, as Gary mentioned, I'm Joshua. I'm from Franklinton. I live in Franklin with my wife and two kids, a nine-year-old girl who goes to Wilton Elementary, and an 11-year-old son who goes to Franklin Middle School. He pretty much summed it up. For the last 15 years, I worked for Highwoods Properties on commercial real estate. Started off as a maintenance tech, went into a supervisor role for about five years, and then just I got started in local government and wanted to get back into local government and get closer to home. Was kind of getting tired of that traffic, going back and forth to Raleigh every day. So, very fortunate and appreciative. Drew, Karina, Gary, and Precious as well for interviewing me and giving me the opportunity to be a part of the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Dixon is a very special person in Granville County, and I take this opportunity to let them know how much we appreciate all she does for all of our, particularly in her sports reporting and her love for young people and the community. She's a fair person. She's a kind person, and she's an accurate reporter, so all are very important in today's world. Recognizing Amanda Dixon for excellence in journalism. Whereas Amanda Dixon has devoted more than 15 years to reporting the events of people of the city of Creedmore, Butler and Granville County. Part of the respect and admiration of our colleagues and community. And whereas Amanda Dixon is the daughter of Amanda Dixon and Richard Alton Dixon, a 1977 graduate of South Grandville High School, and a graduate of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill Tar Heels.
Go Tar Heels!
And whereas Amanda Dixon distinguishes herself as a student-athlete playing catcher for South Grandville High School softball, and continues to be a passionate supporter of all local athletic programs. And Amanda Dixon enjoys reading, shares her book acts, and serves as a news and sports editor for Ledger News and Newsweek Media, her commitment to accurately report the news. And whereas Amanda Dixon's skill, dedication, and professionalism were recognized on September 23, 2025, when she received a North Carolina Press Association Award for the sports coverage in the eighth edition for sports articles written by her and published in the former partner Creedmore News. And whereas judges from the Nebraska Press Association praise her work, noting her talent, passion for sports, and dedication to producing a high-quality journalism, appreciate her energy. Now therefore, we proclaim by the Granville County Board of Commissioners that Amanda Dixon is hereby recognized for her outstanding contributions to journalism, her commitment to excellence in sports reporting, and her dedication to community service. And there's no doubt she serves the community with such great enthusiasm. We appreciate you.
And now, our next item is a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. And Mr. A.J. Spees, will you please come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm A.J. Spees, a veteran service officer for the county. It's been my honor and privilege to be able to serve the veterans, this community, for while the, going on four years I've been here. Something we've been doing since I've been here is Operation Green Light. A lot of people don't understand where it all started. Being a veteran, I'm one of the ones out of 2020 that this was probably the first year it came out, and it was designed for veterans returning back home to understand that people back home still had their support. People like Vietnam veterans never had that. If you have never spoke to a Vietnam veteran, you could figure out what's going on, what they felt like, how long it took them to wear their veterans hat. All those things coming to this Operation Green Light just show the support of our veterans. America's county has a long and proud history of serving the nation's veterans, a legacy that continues. We'll work with federal, state, and local partners to ensure former service members have the access to the resources they need to thrive. The Veterans Day marks the fifth anniversary of Operation Green Light. National Association of County and National Association of County Veteran Service Office invited 3,069 counties to this, to join showing the support for the veterans by lighting buildings green from November 4th to the 11th of 2025, by shining green light in the county government, as well as the residents, demonstrated to the veterans so they could see it and feel appreciated and supported. With this, before I request the support and adoption, I'd like to bring up, we have a bunch of Veteran Day events coming up. We have a Military History Show coming up this Saturday, October 25th. It's going to be 10 o'clock in the morning to 4 o'clock in the afternoon at the Henderson Oxford Airport. We also got a military, ain't no food there, Mr. Windbusch. I was waiting on you. So, here comes your food. Get ready. Military Health and Resource Fair, November 1st, 11 to 16, 11 to 4 o'clock, and that's going to be at the Vance-Granville Community College. This year, we're actually doing four counties are invited to come join us, so we're hosting it and inviting them. The actual veteran, on Veteran Day events this year, right now, what I've received is Creedmore Veterans Breakfast. It'll be at the Willow Oak Room, 8:30 to 10 o'clock, one plate. Let's give them a big round of applause. Post-90 here in Oxford. It'll be at the Oxford Theater in Oxford City Hall, November 11, 11 to 12 p.m. They'll have a program there. The Town of Butler Veteran Program will be 11 to 12 p.m. It'll be at the Soldier Memorial Sports Arena in Butler. And then also one later that we started doing, I don't know if everybody knows, we started doing a quarterly art program for veterans. The Joe Fund, the Granville County Art Council have partnered to support the veterans of our county. That's going to be December 13th, 9 to 11, in the Granville County Library. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to support and adoption of the resolution supporting Operation Green Light for our veterans and continue to support.
Thank you. And we're called for a motion to support.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We support that.
Second motion. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one question before Mr. Spees leaves. Can you tell the public where they can get their green lights from, please?
Matter of fact, coming from this gentleman sitting up here, Ace Hardware proudly has green lights for you. If that's not a shameless plug.
Everybody needs to know where they get it.
I would like to say before Mr. Spees steps down that his work has been quite phenomenal with our veterans and expanded the services considerably. As a veteran, I've actually had the benefit of him here recently, working with me on some benefits that were foregone for close to 40 years, and also with the passing of my father-in-law, which he helped us put together that so he could have his headstone. A.J., I want to thank you for, on behalf of this board, for your dedication, your grit, and tenacity. It really is all about getting the business done and taking care of veterans, and I want to thank you for that, and the committee, the Veterans Affairs Committee as well, and your leadership on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, A.J. We appreciate everything you do for the veterans of this county. All right. And our next, our next item of business is recognition of Human Relations Commission members, Ms. Bessie McGee and Mr. John Windbusch. And we, the background, this is to recognize longstanding members of the Granville County Human Relations Commission. The Granville County Human Relations Commission fosters understanding and goodwill among all citizens to promote the community's welfare. It advises the Board of Commissioners on programs and concerns related to human relations, serves as an impartial forum for community dialogue, and works to promote peace, respect, and harmony. Mr. John Windbusch and Ms. Bessie McGee have faithfully served on the Human Relations Commission since February 1, 1995, and April 4, 2005, respectively. If y'all will, please come forward, and if you've got family members that want to come forward with you, and we call for Commissioner Jay and Commissioner Cozart, and Reverend John Gooch, if you'd like to come forward, since you're the chair of the Human Relations Commission.
If you're able, if you're able. Ms. McGee? I want to, if you feel like it, you could come up. Ms. McGee, if you prefer to stay there, that's fine, if coming up is a, is a challenge. You'd like to come up, come on up, Ms. McGee. I have the real special honor of recognizing someone who I respected for so long. And let me just say that when you come up in a community and you hear about someone and you watch them from a distance, it becomes a very special honor when you have the chance to serve with them. Everything that I'd heard about Mrs. Bessie McGee as I was young, and she was in our school system, made a tremendous difference with numerous students, more than we could ever count. And then I saw her service in the community. It was a real honor just to be able to serve with her on the Human Relations Commission. Her late husband, David, who I remember so fondly, were always giving back to our community. And she was a perfect, perfect fit to serve on our Human Relations Commission, and I'm just so thankful to her for that. She's a person who is full of wonderful ideas. She's so resourceful, wrote a book highlighting contributions of people in the county, and just has been someone who has given back so much of her time and energy for a better Granville County. So, Mrs. McGee, someone who has always admired you and looked up to you, it is a great pleasure for me to present this certificate of recognition to you for 20 faithful years of service to the Granville County Human Relation Commission. And I want to say to you how grateful we are, and I know Chairman Gooch will come later and make some remarks, but it has been a blessing just to know you. You have been an inspiration, and I pray God's continued blessings upon your life. And it's awful lot of proud that I present you this certificate of appreciation.
Thank you. So, thank you so much, Mr. Cozart. I guess you noticed, he talked about things that I did in the past. I'm a young 25-year-old. And so, once COVID came to Granville County, Bessie McGee ceased to attend all the organizations that she belonged to because she loves life. And not that I was afraid to be around anyone, but I just thought a little common sense might, might help. So, I have, I have only attended one or two meetings in quite a while, but I was active at one time. At once, I was the secretary for the organization. But I, I feel very close to the Human Relations Commission, because when I wrote that book that Mr. Cozart, Reverend Cozart was speaking of, this commission decided that all the students in Granville County needed to be exposed to my book, and they placed a copy of my book in every school in Granville County. I will never forget that, because they didn't have to do it, but they did. And I've had parents to come and want the copies of the book and so forth, and the publicity that they gave my book really helped me sell a lot of books. I didn't get rich, but, but I shared what I knew about Granville County with Granville County. I haven't attended the meetings, I said, because of COVID and wearing a mask and all that type thing, but my heart has been with the group, and I thank you sincerely.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Ms. McGee. This young man, I'm a young man. I've been knowing him. I first met John years ago when I wasn't in government. I was in large, young bucking in large, and this young man was saying, always said, Eric Tubbs got to stand on his own. I said, who in the world? And I learned John, I learned, I learned him and grew up, knowing him, that he was a man that, that were upright, tried to do the best that he can for his peoples and his community. And John has always have done that. And, and John have served on this board for, since, what is it, 19, what was it? 1995. That's a long, a long time ago. And we appreciate John, your service that you have done, the meetings you have ten, that, the service you have give to this, to this county, and, and not only you, but all rest of the members, that what you have done for this to make Granville County peaceful and a, with, with great joy to live in a county with peace and harmony. It calls your leadership and y'all leadership as the human relation. And we thank you, and let's really like to present you to you. Certificate of Recognition presented to John Windbusch for 30 faithful years of service to the Granville County Human Relations Commission this 20th day of October. Thank you.
And as Reverend Gooch is coming, I just want you to know, Mrs. McGee is 95 years old, and with so many.
Good evening. On behalf of the Granville County Human Relations Commission, as chairperson, I want to say to Ms. McGee and Brother Windbusch, thank you also very much for the service that you rendered down through the years. I want to thank you personally, because you taught me what we needed to do as being on the Granville County Human Relation, as what needed to be done. And when the issues came up in the county, you stood right there with us, with me and the other members of the human relation, that we might get the job done. It's not a very easy job. We give up our time. We give up a lot of things in order to make things work and to have peace in our communities and the issues that people are having throughout the county. And because of that, again, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Granville County Human Relations Commission. There are several members from the commission that are here tonight to help celebrate you on this day and for the years that you have spent serving, and we just tell you thank you. Enjoy your time. And whenever you get time to come back to the meeting, come on back. We'll give you a chair at the table. Amen? Amen.
I just want to say thank you to both of you for your many, many years of service. You've been a great inspiration to a lot of people, and it's, you're two examples of the people who have made the county what it is today, and you're certainly appreciated, and we want you to know, know that. And I want to take this opportunity to lobby the Human Relations Commission to make both of these young, young people here honorary or legacy members for the rest of their lives on the Human Relations Committee, Commission.
Thank you so very much. We'll make it happen.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And, you know, appreciate it. By the way, Mr. Windbusch is in my district. He resides in my district. The bulk of his estate is in another district, but he resides in my district. But thank you, thank you, Ms. McGee. Thank you, Mr. Windbusch. We appreciate both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I just want to have this opportunity to just say some, I was a little disappointed when they said, no food. And then, I didn't have nothing much to say after Bessie McGee And then I didn't have nothing much to say after Bessie McGee, which wrote a book and she was my teacher, so naturally she would know more to say about the everything, even the Human Relation Commission. But I do want to say that I have enjoyed working with this group. I think I was here when, when we started the group in, here in Grandville County, and, and I pushed this thing all the way down to, to, down to Raleigh, and they wrote a, wrote a letter, I think Jimmy Crawford somewhere, he probably wanted my vote. But he brought, brought that letter here in Grandville County and said that y'all just didn't know what a value that you had when you had on John Windbusch. And people after then, they just showed up, began to feed me, and I started to come up with something else. And I found out I did, that the lady over there at the newspaper, we sat over there in the car, and I ain't never been so pleased. She made me feel just almost, almost feel, made me feel like a lactrum. And we do. I was just joking. In a way. Okay. But I do thank, thank y'all for the opportunity to honor me. Thank you twice, thank you three times, and I will try to continue to serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I get, I get, you gave me a piece of candy. Oh, you gave me a candy. Come right here and get my candy.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Our next item on our agenda tonight is our public comments section, and we have, we have five people signed up to speak, and the first one on the list is Fred Johnson. And Mr. Johnson, if you will, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Just really happy you got your mic back. See you tomorrow. My name is Fred Johnson. I live at 311 Ninth Street in Butner. I am also a member of the Down Homes Transportation Action Group. I'm here tonight to raise awareness regarding inner-city buses.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I think Down Homes is a partisan, a partisan political organization. I don't know that our rules allow for that.
We have to refer to Attorney.
Rules, have any, do our, do the rules we have for the board regards to public comments?
My understanding is he can't endorse a candidate or speak in favor of a candidate here. I don't know what he's planning to talk about.
I'm not doing that.
Okay. Just, just for the record, it's a partisan, a partisan political affiliation, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Please proceed.
Can I have my three minutes back?
Yes, absolutely.
I want to, I want to begin by thanking Commissioner May for his persistence in advocating for better transportation and for more federal and state funding for rural transportation in Grandville County. Kudos to, to Commissioner May. I also want to recognize his initiative and diligence in launching the Campo Northern Falls Lake area study. That study include, has a QR code available for residents to take a survey to gauge citizens' interest in different types of land development. As to why we should advance and advocate for inner-city bus transportation, recently it was reported that the average price of a new car is now $50,000, and more Americans are struggling to make their monthly car loan payments. Low and middle-income people, the majority of people living in Grandville County need travel options for work and pleasure other than a car. And just as important, it's also a fairness issue. I have a, I have a map here from the Department of Transportation in North Carolina. It shows their subsidies of bus systems throughout North Carolina, and I'll, I'll leave you all a copy of this map. You can get it on the website. We're the only region that does not have inner-city bus system in the entire state of North Carolina. And the colors that you'll notice, and they'll point it out, these are all subsidized bus, inner-city bus systems by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. And so, when I show you this map to my neighbors and friends, the typical, typical reaction is surprise and not surprise. The surprise that the state funds an inner-city bus system. Most people don't even know that. And not surprised that we're the only region that doesn't have a system. Commissioner Gooch always reminds us, citizens should do their homework, and so I created an inner-city bus service to acquire empirical data as to whether or not Grandville residents will use a bus system connecting its towns and cities to Raleigh and Durham that can also connect them to other towns and cities in North Carolina. I have a survey, it's on the back of the map to collect empiric, data. It's a QR code. I'm asking that the county commissioners consider placing this on the county website. Carts already has it on their website, and the data will go to the North Carolina Department of Transportation Integrated Mobility Division. Finally, I want to point out to the county commissioners that nowhere on the county government website is there any mention of transportation. In fact, Carts is not listed under the community page nor under the government page. I'm asking the commissioners to consider creating a transit category on its webpage. And I'm also asking for a community bulletin section to allow the Falls, the Falls Lake North QR code and IR code on that, only, I'm only asking for two months, be posted, or at least as regarding IR code, please direct people to Carts' website.
Mr. Johnson, your time has expired.
All right, well, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who do I get this?
We appreciate it. Our next public comment is by Landon Tate. If you will, come forward and state your name and address for the record, please, and...
Good evening. My name is Landon Tate. I reside at 1664 Jack Clement Road in St. Em, North Carolina. For those of you who don't know me, I'm co-owner of Grandville Auction Company. I'm a bit disappointed the planning director isn't here tonight because I have a lot to say about how me and my business were, were treated. If there were a headline to our story, it would be zoned out of business. A little over three months ago, we received a letter from the county stating that we were in violation of Grandville County zoning ordinances and were to cease operations immediately. The very next day, we went to the planning director's office to discuss our options. Given the impact our business had on the local community, I expected a helping hand. What we received was anything but that. We were misled, we were dismissed, and frankly, I felt belittled. In that meeting, rather than working together to find a solution, I was met with comments that made me feel as if our full-time operation was a mere hobby, a hobby that produced thousands of dollars in sales tax revenue for the very county that you all serve. The planning director even suggested that we just buy the old Richie Brothers place. I felt as if the whole thing was a joke to the planning director while my livelihood was at stake. I do think I made it clear, however, after this comment, that my auction hobby didn't come with a $20 million budget. We were told our issue came down to two things, the storage of items on the property and the traffic and parking during our events. We were told the storage issue could be resolved by applying for a major special use permit, and once approved, we could host two in-person auctions per year. Online auctions, though, were a gray area and likely wouldn't be regulated. We were also advised to not file an appeal. We were told if you follow the proper procedures, there's no need to file, to file an appeal because we won't bother you during that process. A month later, all of this would come back to bite me. Suddenly, we were told we couldn't hold online auctions after all, and we learned that if we had filed an appeal, we could have continued operating legally throughout the appeal process, but we didn't because we trusted the planning director's guidance. All we ever wanted was to comply and keep our business going, but every time we tried, something new was thrown in our face. After two months of working quietly behind the scenes, it all went public. We received notice that we were not allowed to bring any more equipment onto our own property until we had received a special use permit. Something never clearly explained to us before this point. At this point, we had already planned to bring consignments in as normal. Behold the day of events off-site, holding it virtually to stay compliant, but even that wasn't good enough. We felt lied to, we felt betrayed, and frankly, we felt bullied into shutting down. When we shared our story online, the community support was overwhelming, and we're so grateful for that. But support doesn't equal progress. Is that my three minutes?
Okay, thank you. Our next one is Mr. Larry Adcock, and if you will, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name's Larry Adcock. My address is 1699 Julian Lookley Road, Rougemont, and I yield my time to Landon Tate.
Support doesn't equal progress.
Landon, will you hold just a second, please?
Yes, sir.
Is that permissible, Attorney Rinn?
I believe it is.
Okay.
It is for public hearings. I don't have the rules for public comment in front of me.
Okay. Well, we're gonna consider it legal and, and move forward. You have three more minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Support doesn't equal progress. It became clear if we wanted to host an auction in September, it would have to be outside of Grandville County, so we made the decision to move. We spent thousands of dollars moving equipment to a new location, followed every single rule that we were given by Grandville County, and just when we thought we were moving forward, bam, we were blindsided again. Our special use permit hearing was actually scheduled for tonight, October 20th, and as I mentioned these dates, I want you to keep them in mind. Our hearing was scheduled for tonight, October 20th. On September 25th, we received an email from the planning director listing 10 new and additional requirements, requirements that had not already been made aware to, with a deadline of October 1st, should we wish to keep our original hearing date. That gave us three business days to complete a 10-bullet checklist while continuing to run our multimillion-dollar hobby. The planning director's excuse to why he waited until this day, he was simply just too busy. Many of the requirements were unclear to me and quite frankly, went over my head. Although I didn't understand all of them, I did understand these two. The first was a potential traffic analysis, one that imposes at least a $50,000 bill, but that's only the beginning. Do they find that we must put a turn lane in to continue operating? Do they find that we need a caution light out front? It's clear at this point, the county's planning and zoning department was not here to help us in any way. The second bullet point was we needed five parking spaces for every thousand foot of storage and paved handicap accessible spots. I've been to auctions from New York to Florida and all the way out to Illinois. Not once have I seen a concreted handicap parking space at a farm auction. Needless to say, we were blindsided. We had three days, 10 new hurdles, and no clarity. I didn't even bother to call to ask for clarity because at that point, I no longer trusted the people giving me the answers. That day, standing in the field, Perry and I made a tough decision. We decided that Grandville County no longer had a place for us. It was no longer somewhere where our business could thrive. We were betrayed, we were lied to, and personally, I felt helpless throughout the entire process. Fast forward to today, it's been three weeks since we informed the planning department we were withdrawing our special use permit application. We made our first Facebook post, and when we did, people asked how they could help. We asked them to reach out to their commissioner to express how important Grandville Auction Company was, not only to them, but to the county as a whole. Most came back with the same response. They would say the commissioner said it was, it's out of their hands. And I agree, at that time, it was, because a special use permit was a quasi-judicial matter, there could be no communication. But what about now? Is that my three minutes on that?
Yep. Okay. And our next speaker is Kaylee Blackburn. If you will, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kaylee Blackburn. I live at 3667 Shannon Road, and I yield my time to Landon Tate.
Okay. Karen brought this to my attention. Our attorney didn't have the procedures, but our clerk does, and she just dug it out, and we don't run into this very often, by the way. And each person signed up to speak will have three minutes to make his or her remarks. Each person signed up to speak will only be entitled to the time allotted to each speaker and one additional time period which may be yielded to him or her by another individual who has also signed up to speak on a particular topic. So, based on the rules, you've already had your, your time plus one additional.
That's right. Commissioner, could I allow someone else to finish what I have, what I wrote down here?
Absolutely. Yes. I see that Perry's signed up along with Kaylee.
Perry, would you mind finishing then?
And if...
Yeah, but you get two. You're gonna take hers and... He can have two, right?
Absolutely. That'll work. That, that will work and keep us on track and then, yeah, within the limits of the rules.
Just start with, just start back here.
Perry, if you will, for the record, state your name and address.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman.
And when Perry's three minutes runs out, Ms. Kaylee, will you stand up and, and do the same again, please?
Mr. Chairman, board, thank you for the opportunity. Perry Inlow, 5091 Gooch's Mill Road, Oxford, North Carolina. As he was saying, most came back with the same response. The commissioners would say it's out of our hands, and I agree at the time, because the special use permit was a quasi-judicial matter, there could be no communication. But what about now? Where have you been for the past three weeks? When we announced we were moving out of Grandville County, did anyone reach out to ask us to try to stop this? Did anyone consider the loss in sales tax revenue when we leave? Did anyone think about this before proposing a tax hike from 6.75% to 7% sales tax? What about a text amendment to mirror neighboring communities and counties to allow auctions on residential agricultural land? Did anyone pick up the phone to talk to us to see if there was a path forward? The answer is no. To the commissioners in front of me, many of you campaigned on supporting economic growth in Grandville County. I have to say, I've been severely disappointed. I want to leave all of you with this. What I've said tonight wasn't professionally written, it came straight from my heart. If you don't take anything else away from what I've said tonight, I want you to remember this. I believe beyond a shadow of a doubt that we were lied to and betrayed to by the planning and zoning department. I also feel that not a single commissioner in front of me cared about our problem. If economic growth is something you truly stand for, then you must take a hard look at who developers and business owners are forced to deal with on a daily basis. It's quite embarrassing how the public views our planning and zoning department. They should be there to help businesses, not shut them down. If your planning and zoning department is attacking more businesses more than they're helping them, capitalism is dead. Lately, we've had the opportunity to work with Person County's interim planning director. At the end of every phone call, she says, "Thank you for choosing Person County, and we're excited to have you here." That's how it should be, that's how businesses should feel. So commissioners, as you leave here today, you have one choice. You can do nothing, and life will go on for all of us here, or you can do something, evaluate how we've been treated, and make changes to ensure no other business is stomped out by your zoning regulations. Or you can do something, evaluate how we've been treated, and make changes to ensure no other business is stomped out by your zoning regulations. You have the ability to fix this. I encourage you to do it. Thank you for your time and come see us in Person County. And should I allow her to?
Yeah, well, you still got time left.
Okay. Again, Mr. Chairman Boyd, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Perry Inlow, 5091 Goochus Mill Road Auction. I'm not here tonight to talk about the pattern of disrespect that my business received from your planning and zoning department or the fact that they were completely unprofessional and unwilling to help us in any way during our SUP application process. I'm not even here tonight to talk about how our ordinances are unfair regarding auctions and don't really make sense. I'm not here, I'm actually here tonight to talk about sales tax. See, one of the main arguments voters had when trying to save one of the largest grassroots businesses in Grahamville County from being stomped out by overregulation was how much sales tax we collect for the county. In the last 12 months, this county's 2% received from our sales tax is over $100,000 from our auctions alone. When we decided to withdraw our application and leave Grahamville County, voters said, "What about the sales tax?" They had no reason to worry, though, because on October 6th, this board voted to raise the sales tax percent on our citizens. Some questions were raised during the discussion of that motion that night. It made me wonder, does every board member of this board really understand sales tax? How it's collected, how it's distributed, where the money goes? I'll end you with this tonight, and I appreciate your time. I respect this board and its authority, as well as County Attorney Wren and County Manager Cummins. Did you, as a commissioner, know prior to October 6th that businesses were required to collect sales tax independently of the state of North Carolina and pay it to the Department of Revenue? Did you know that certain items were exempt from North Carolina's sales tax? Did you understand a basic economic process that affects every business in our county? If you did not know that prior to October 6th, then I would respectfully ask that you examine the position you hold and the authority you hold over our business and a person's livelihood. Some things that may be footnotes on an agenda are people's livelihoods, and it seems to me in Grahamville County, it's easier to be on the side of the table that doesn't contribute anything rather than to be on the side that does contribute. Thank you. I really appreciate your time.
All right. Okay, thank you. And our next item of business is Public Health Matters and Resolution of Support for the Faith and Mental Health Certificate Program. And by the way, if you guys want to stick around, our attorney will have some comments at the end of the meeting that might bring a different light to this subject. Or you could do a hit-and-run. That's okay. Yeah. I just want to invite everyone to stay because at the end of our meeting and our attorney comments, Mr. Wren has some comments to make regarding this matter, and, you know, it might paint a little bit different story. But anyway, you're welcome to stay. You don't have to. You can go if you want to. But, you know, if you'd like to stand here and what Attorney Wren has to say, you're more than welcome to. And now, our resolution to support the Faith and Mental Health Certificate Program. And this is to consider adoption of a resolution of support for the Faith and Mental Health Certificate Program, a collaborative community initiative that provides free training and certification to churches seeking to better understand and respond to mental health, behavioral health, and substance use needs in the congregations in surrounding counties. And Mr. Frank Sossman is gonna give us a little background on this, and if you will come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's an honor to be here. Faith in Mental Health is an attempt to address the mental health crisis through the local church. When we did away with a brick and mortar, mortar, uh, mental health building and started subcontracting the services out, we haven't recovered from that. People don't know what's available, and even if they know a name of an agency, they don't know how to maneuver to get there and get the services they need. So faith in mental health connects the church to the public health department, the mental health provider in both counties, Vance and Grahamville, and also the Health and Human Services Mental Health Division. Those three divisions and myself have worked together to put this program together. And Grahamville and Vance County are the pilot program. We've had two kickoffs, and we've had a good response so far from the churches in both counties, but we still have a lot of room for additional churches to participate. We'll be having a third kickoff sometime the first of next year. On November the 10th, we're meeting with all the churches that have already been a part of the two kickoffs, plus any other church that wants to come, because we're gonna talk about depression and anxiety. Dr. Drake will be speaking at that event as well. But Dr. Carl Johnson was not able to be here tonight. He works for the Health Department and the school at UNC. He's just extremely knowledgeable, and after I got out of office, we started this when I was in office, but when I got out of office, they were so convinced that this program would help that they wanted to kick it off even if it didn't get through the Senate. It got through the House, but not through the Senate. So we've kicked it off as a result of that. And what it does, the first level of the certification is orientation to all the agencies in the county. So they have access to that information. They have the name, the phone number, the location, all that's available. And then we ask the church every month to highlight a mental health issue so they can start the discussion about mental health, which removes the stigma that exists in churches and in the community. And people can begin to talk about their mental illness to their pastor and to their church members. So it's an excellent program. It's going good. Anything else that you can do to encourage local churches in Grahamville County to participate? Please do contact Carl Johnson at the Health Department. Contact me, Frank Sossman. I'll be glad to do anything I can to help a church get engaged, even before another kickoff if necessary. But thank you for your endorsement.
Thank you. And staff recommends that the board adopt the attached Resolution of Support for the Faith and Mental Health Certificate Program, recognizing the program's value to the Grahamville County community and encouraging continued collaboration between public health agencies, faith-based organizations, and local partners to address mental health needs. And do I hear a motion on the resolution?
Make a motion. Will you accept?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Eyes have it. The resolution is approved. Thank you. And the next is a item by the Grahamville County Tax Administration, and Ms. Jenny Short, you're gonna, you will come forward. And this is a consideration of refund request for Robert and Cheryl Murray. And this is on page 49 of your agenda.
Good evening, Board. I'm coming here to you today to request a refund. So back in February, there was a deed transfer of property from O. Lee Taylor Ayers to Robert and Cheryl Murray. On this deed, it was a little unclear from the description of which parcel it was. So an error, our office transferred the incorrect parcel. It was not caught until this year when a local attorney contacted us, and we looked into it. And we figured out, yes, this, it was the incorrect parcel that was transferred. The Murrays ended up paying the Harris, O. Lee Harris, Ayers, uh, excuse me, O. Lee Taylor Ayers, they ended up paying 23 and 24 tax bill. So due to the clerical error, I'm coming to you today to request that we issue them a refund, and then we will bill the correct taxpayer.
What's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make one question.
Yes.
Mr. County Attorney, if the clerical error is on our part, we have the right to be able to, the Board can approve to refund those taxes?
That's one of the statutory grounds. If there's a clerical error, it gives you all the authority to do that?
Under that condition, I will make a motion that we refund those incorrect taxes back to the Murrays.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion. Do I hear a second? Okay, have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries, and refund is approved. All right, and now we have a consideration of present use value, late application.
Yes, this is to consider a present use value application that was submitted late. So this property is owned by Milton Sadowite and Ezra Sadowite Jr. Only what they did is, was it, Milton Sadowite? He and his brother, they own, each own a whole, but one-half interest, undivided interest. So it was left to them by their mother, Bessie Mae Sadowite. Milton transferred his interest in the property to Kiva Smith, but retained the life estate. So under North Carolina law, whenever a deed is changed, whenever anything is recorded changing the characteristics of ownership, we have to request that they fill out an application. So we have updated records. So when we sent a, we sent a letter to them with an application asking it to be filled out, we didn't get a response within the 60-day period. So there was another letter sent to them with the deferred taxes on there, the deferred tax bill, rollback taxes. So after the bill was sent, Ms. Sherri Sadowite, which is the niece of Milton, contacted the tax office requesting, you know, to be considered for late application. She explained that Milton Sadowite normally handled all the property, all the property-related matters. And he is now experiencing a medical condition that has prevented him from completing the application. She found the application, contacted the office. She also sent a letter making a request, a note from the physician, and we are bringing this here today for you, hopefully, to approve the late application.
And the recommendation is the tax administrator recommends approval of the late present use value application submitted on behalf of Milton and Ezra Sadowite. Just cause has been demonstrated in accordance with the county's late application policy based on medical documentation verifying circumstances that prevented timely filing. And you have a letter on file from the doctor's office stating this. Is that correct?
Yes, that is not attached, but we do have it for you to review.
Okay.
I'd suggest that be removed from the agenda because of the confidential medical nature of the
Okay.
information.
Well, I understand that. Okay, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. Will you approve the recommendation provided based upon the criteria within the statute that describes incapacitation or incompetent?
Excellent. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have Economic Development Matters. And this is item number 15 on our agenda, and Charlotte Duncan is coming forward. And the purpose is to approve an on-call engineering contract for economic development projects in compliance with the North Carolina Mini Brooks Act, NCGS 143-64.31.
Lots of numbers and letters. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. We, our department issued a request for qualifications back in mid-July that ran for about a month with responses due by August 8th. And the goal of this process was for us to bring on board, look for qualified firms, and bring them on board our, what I call our extended economic development team. So when we procure engineering services, architectural services, surveying services, things like that, we are required to procure them in a certain way. But these things take time. And so in order for us to be as nimble as possible and to act as close as possible to the speed of business, and also to be able to respond a little more quickly to grant applications that might pop up, we decided to bring on, to my knowledge, the first time for our economic development team to have on-call engineers in place. So when we issued this RFQ back in July, we received a total of 22 responses from firms across the state of North Carolina. We, we being our team, reviewed these firms and shortlisted five of them for interview. And I just want to real quick thank our review panel. That was myself, the economic development specialist and coordinator, our development services director and assistant director, as well as the director of the CAR-TAR Council of Governments. So we had a well-rounded team to review the 22 firms. And after the interviews, we decided to offer the, a three-year on-call contract to the following firms, Kim Lee Horn, KCI, Kittleson and Associates, and Thomason Hutton. Just to note, these on-call contracts do not come at any expense. We enter into these relationships to satisfy the Mini Brooks Act requirements. And then as projects come on, we will contact these four engineering firms that have already been pre-selected based on qualifications, send them the scope of work, and then they can respond and start talking numbers. We're not able to really talk numbers until you go through the RFQ process, so it just really extends the amount of time. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Yes, go ahead.
Excuse me. By having these four, they're kind of like having an attorney on call.
Correct.
On, yes, the term. So will they expediate when you refer them? Does that also mean they're gonna expediate them looking, or does it just mean they're gonna be there? But will they be faster?
Sorry, go ahead.
Will they be faster in completing the work that we need done?
I hope so. But they are not obligated to, unless Attorney Wren tells me differently, but they are not obligated to, they can have, some of these firms have on-call contracts with multiple governments across the state and other private sectors. So they are not obligated to respond to anything that we send out. So if we send out a scope of services for something at Triangle North, for example, we have four on-calls. We feel confident based on their responses and in the interview process that they want to work with us, and so they will respond if they have the capacity based on their current load. We certainly don't want a firm to respond and not have the capacity to handle our project successfully. So nothing obligates them to responding to us, but we have, what this does really is just gets us a little further in the game in accordance with just gets us a little further in the game in accordance with Mini-Brooks so that we can then start talking numbers.
Would you send all four of those to contract, or would you pick one of those four?
It depends on the project. Some of the firms have specialties in some areas that others may not, but most likely I would send all four, a scope of services, to see. I can't guarantee that'll always be the case, but we would definitely even still follow our county procurement policies as much as possible with getting multiple quotes, even within the on-call process. Does that make sense?
And I just want to second what she said, everything she said was correct, but I'd also say that we structured this to comply with federal procurement requirements, so if we get a federal grant, we should be able to use this without having to go through that lengthy procurement process. And really what this does is that if we have something that we need to respond to quickly, it shaves off that procurement time, so we don't have to go through that, that process. We still have to be mindful of things like the Mini-Brooks Act, which depending on the size of the agreement require that it be a qualifications-based selection, and that's what we, what we've done here. So we would still need to be careful about how we, how we dealt with them since it's for architectural and engineering services.
Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the recommendation from our economic development director.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here and done, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. Thank you. And our next item is Information Technology Matters, and this is for approval of courthouse access control and security system upgrade. And, all right, we got Chris and, and Scott coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Board. I come before you tonight to seek approval for the initiation of contract negotiations for the design and implementation of an upgraded access control and security camera system for the Granville County Courthouse. In April of 2025, the Information Technology Department issued a request for proposal to design and implement an access control and security camera system upgrade for the Granville County Courthouse. Some of these key features, key project objectives was to upgrade and integrate door access control and security camera system into a single unified platform, to enhance security with cloud-based camera storage, advanced AI-based analytics, and smart access control features, and also to ensure that the system is scalable, future-proof, and provide centralized management for both surveillance and door access control. The IT Department, in conjunction with Development Services, narrowed down the proposals, the proposals to responders that best fit Granville County needs out of 11 total responders. That shortlist was Security 101 at an initial one-time cost of $145,460, which includes for the first three-year term, a license fee of $20,400. Pavlon at a cost of $125,204 with a first three-year license fee included of $27,650. And Sonatrol Technologies at $129,450 with $31,115 in first three-year term included. There's a note for Security 101 licensing fee, licensing fees of $20,400 for the initial three-year term are included in the cost proposal. After the initial three-year term, an annual license fee will be billed at approximately $14,700 per year. Staff conducted vendor references and attended demos of both access control and camera security products to evaluate each platform. Although Security 101 submitted the highest bid among the shortlist vendors, their proposal was determined to deliver the greatest overall solution, sorry, greatest overall value to Granville County. The selection was based on their advanced and scalable technology solutions, reliable proximity for service responsiveness, and robust support infrastructure, all which aligned with Granville County's operational and security needs. The proposed not-to-exceed amount of $160,000 ensures significant budget authorization to address any unanticipated or incidental costs associated with materials and installations that were not identified at the time of this recommendation. This request for proposal proceed, proposal proceeds to use for the process or compliant with Section 2 of the Granville County Contract and Purchasing Policy. Funding is available in this fiscal year of 2526 under general line item number 104250596. It is the recommendation of the IT Department and the Development Service Directors recommends approval to initiate contract negotiations with Security 101 to deliver proposal modifications that best align with Granville County's goals for this project in an amount not to exceed $160,000, and further recommend that the board authorize the county manager to execute a contract once finalized by the county attorney. And I can answer any technical questions you may have, and Scott Phillips is here for any other questions unrelated to technical.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a quick question. I apologize for being talkative tonight. The 20, we, we discussed this briefly at our work session. The $20,400 for the license fees, is that per year for the first three years, or is that three, the three-year total is $20,400?
So for the inert, the initial first term, the $20,400 is included in that 145,460. After the three-year term, so year four, will be roughly $14,700 per year.
And so the $20,000 is a per-year figure for, it's for all three years?
First three years, yeah.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions? All right, we'll call for motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we accept the recommendation of our IT Department and Mr. Phillips, that we approve the contract.
I second.
As presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I happen to know the account manager on this, so I had, I was not involved in any of the processes concerning this, as you're well aware, the board does not get involved in these type of things, or had any previous discussion with anyone in the county regarding this. I just want to make, make clear to that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Nor do I have any financial interest in or around the company or anything of that nature.
Okay, now, thank you, Commissioner May. Is that sufficient with our attorney?
Yes, it doesn't sound like the type of conflict, it doesn't sound like a conflict of interest under the statutes.
Okay, thank you. Always helps double-check. All right, is there any further discussion on the motion? Here and done, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you both. And now we have Sheriff Matters, and Sheriff Fountain, you coming forward to our first, first matter is the fiscal year 26 Governor's Highway Safety Program Overtime Grant Resolution, and that's on page 100 of our agenda.
First, good evening to all, to Chair, the Board. Giving honor to God for what he does for the sheriff's office and our people. We bring to you several proposals tonight, the first being the Governor's Highway Safety Program Overtime Grant Resolution. Chief Buster will address.
Good evening. At the direction of Sheriff Fountain, we applied for and we were awarded a grant for overtime funds for highway traffic safety enforcement. This is not an interdiction, it's not extra routine patrols, this is specifically for highway traffic safety. $15,000 paid at an overtime rate for all officers who engage in the overtime. It will allow us to, to match GHSP initiatives as well as assist other counties with overtime efforts and no additional cost to the county. This is an overtime reimbursable grant as well, and the sheriff recommends that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Chief Buster?
I think in your package it may say 30. It's 15.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll motion to accept the recommendation coming from the sheriff on the highway, what is highway, highway safety program.
Okay, thank you, and we have a second.
Second motion.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here and done, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. Thank you. And our next item is a termination of memorandum of understanding for opioid treatment programs, and that's on page 108. And Sheriff?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Sheriff, so in the resolution, I think that's what you were talking about, it says 30,000. So, so I'm looking at the resolution, and it says 30, so I just want to make sure it is 15. That, this, let me show you.
It's 15.
Okay, it's been changed, okay. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And this is, this item is termination of memorandum of understanding for opioid treatment program.
Basically, in July 1st of 2024, we entered into an MOU between us and opioid settlement funds for $196,000, and we're trying to terminate that, clean things up, because we had to go back, and we did not use funding and/or the positions that were allocated. So I think, and Ms. Kathy, if she could correct me if I'm wrong, we had some positions that we felt would be better served in a different capacity, so the current agreement, we want to clean that up, get rid of it, and then propose the current agreement with the MOU, which basically gets rid of our support person and brings us on with a nurse that will be served 24 hours a week working with our peer support, our LCAS, in the MAT program. So we need to clean this up, close it out, and then come back with the, another request for this funding sources that we require.
Mr. Chairman, just, so Sheriff, what you want to do right now is just terminate the current MOU?
Yes.
Just totally terminate the whole agreement and then start over again?
Yep.
And you'll bring that back to us at some?
There, there's several interrelated items.
Yeah, we got, ready to go. So we just clean this one up, and then we'll present the other.
So I just, I just want to be clear, that makes sense to me, this is my question, is for the sheriff. So Sheriff, we had the MAT program approved, but we only spent a few thousand dollars of that.
$4,665.
Okay, so, so with the, with the next memorandum, we're going to be talking about the MAT program actually going full speed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. You go, sir.
All right, any other questions? If there's no other questions for the sheriff, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move for, to approve the recommendation to terminate, to terminate the current MOU.
I second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here and done, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. And now we move on to approval of the amended MOU for sheriff's office medication assisted treatment program for fiscal year 2627, and that's on page 112 of your agenda. And Sheriff?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I think it would make sense to do the next agenda item ahead of this one, I think it would flow better for everyone. That's a resolution approving the appropriation of opioid funds.
Okay.
I apologize.
Oh, no problem. We'll skip down to item 20, and that's on 120 of our agenda, and this is a resolution to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement funds, sheriff's office medication assisted treatment MAT program. And the, Sheriff, you want to handle this, or Kathy, you want to handle this?
Okay, Kathy Hazlett, I'm the facilitator of the Granville County Opioid Advisory Committee, and so this is essentially round two, and a resolution was approved back in February, but because we were trying to put everything in alignment with the Southern Health Partners contract, a new MOU, we are now revisiting the resolution, which is the same dollar amount that you approved already. So that's $252,330 for fiscal year 26, and then another $252,330 for fiscal year 27. And this now includes $60,000 for the Southern Health Partners nurse who will be available and helping to do the dosing and participate in the medication and treatment for opioid use disorders at the Granville Jail. So the, the amount of money does not change, we just revisited some, some line items so that we could pull money elsewhere from the approved budget to, to pay the $60,000 for Southern Health Partners. Did I make that clear for everybody?
Okay, so the $60,000 is coming from where?
It's, it's just various line items. We had previously personnel, qualified professional in the original budget, that that person is no longer part of the program, we've restructured things, so the bulk of that money, all of that money is, is being applied for the Southern Health Partners personnel, and then we just took money from other line items to make it work.
Within the opioid money.
Pardon me?
It's all opioid money.
It's all opioid money.
And it was all in the original resolution you approved in February?
Correct.
What, Mr. Chairman, how many hours, I believe the sheriff, did you say 24 hours a week is what the nurse is going to be available?
Yes. In addition to, that's addition to our already nursing staff. So what we'll have is a nurse on duty, was what we have now, seven days a week, 12 hours, then we'll have an additional nurse that is dedicated to the MAT program, work with the peer support and our LCAS social worker to make sure that everything is done as far as the interviews intake, the health and physical screenings, that, that one nurse will take care of all of those duties. So the HMPs will be done, it's clean handoff, and work with our community partners as well.
Is the 24 hours enough?
Yes, sir, we will revisit it, but I think it is, because eight hours a day, three days a week is enough that we'll check who's coming in, who's coming out, because our turnover isn't that great, and if they don't qualify, they have to be Granville County residents to even qualify for the program. So those are things that we think we will be, 24 hours should be enough to make sure that we are clear, but we will come back, and Ms. Kathy has a hand, don't, thumb on the finger or the pulse of this whole situation, so she's been able to help us with it, and then with the feedback that we'll provide to the board, this is what we have here is the inductor, indox that we do, and then how we can get them out, the successful completion of those programs. We have a data-driven presentation that we want to give you guys every quarter, I think, is that right, or every month?
No, a quarter.
Every quarter, data-driven information about how many we've treated, all those things that we've done, diversionary programs and disciplinaries that may come out of these things, hopefully none. But yeah, 24 should be enough.
Okay. Yeah, any other, any other questions for the sheriff? Here and done, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the new resolution, Mr. County Attorney, that's been presented to us.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here and done, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. Now we'll, we'll go back and pick up item 19, which is approval of the amended MOU for sheriff's office medication assisted treatment MAT program fiscal year 2627.
Good evening again, gentlemen and ma'am. We're here to seek approval for the
Good evening again, gentlemen and ma'am. We're here to seek approval for the new opioid funding. And it's the same one, we just added some new language with a different position, and the money stays the same. And we're ready to go.
Okay. Any questions for the sheriff? We already went over this earlier. Or part of it, anyway. Does anyone have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll motion to approve the sheriff's recommendation.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Here a second.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is item number twenty-one, approval of amended contract with Southern Health Partners. And Sheriff Fountain?
Good evening again. This is just a follow-up to make sure that we know that the sixty thousand dollars that we're requesting to amend the contract with Southern Health Partners is already embedded into the contract that you just approved.
Okay, any questions for the sheriff? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
And it's something I just want to make sure we're clear on. I've been in conversation with Southern Health Partners up till today, to make sure that they understand that there is going to be no renegotiations, none of that, any contracts that we enter into. So I've got the email correspondence from them that I'll leave you a copy with, that they're not going to try to increase anything because of what we have in our daily population, ADP that we have. So we're going to protect our county and our interest and not going to be kind of worked down the road.
So, Mr. Chair, last evening I discussed this matter with County Attorney, which is paragraph seven point two and below that, and asked the attorney to take a look at that, because based on the annual daily average of inmates, the county's listed a hundred. So Sheriff, we do have, is that our daily inmate population a hundred?
Our daily, our average daily population is around one twelve.
Okay, but it benefits us to leave this at hundred, and per the below and the email we got from the attorney is that, that Southern Health is going to hold, and, and there will not be future negotiations regarding this.
Correct. And
Not this, not this fiscal year, correct?
Okay.
And so just to make sure everybody's on the same page about what we're talking about, the current contract has a set fee for an inmate, average daily population of a hundred inmates. We've been running slightly over that. I believe the sheriff told me the average inmate daily population's about one twelve. But when we exceed one hundred, we simply pay a dollar and forty-one cents per inmate per day above that amount. And rather than negotiating for a higher base level, this seemed to give the county the most effective way of, of covering any overages. Is that accurate?
Very much, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions on this?
No, thank you, Mr. Ren, and Sheriff for resolving that so that we do not have to go back and have that hamper us.
Okay, and we have a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion?
To approve.
We had second. Okay. And that was the discussion on the motion. So therefore, hearing no other discussion, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion is approved. And we have one more matter.
We stand before you tonight seeking approval of a new commissary vendor for the Granville County Sheriff's Office. For years, the Granville County Sheriff's Office has been using one vendor. And through relationships, conferences, talking to other sheriffs, and just prison experience, we saw an opportunity with the expiration of the contract of the company we currently deal with to put out an RFP for services that would be more beneficial, not just to our, our pockets, but to the inmate population. We had put this bid out per statute. We narrowed it down to three, then we narrowed it down to two. And we did not select one vendor based on profit margins. We based on the customer service and the product. Because if we sell more product, we have more increase in the commission that we get. So we would ask that the approval for key fee commissary services to be our new vendor. And future, I am looking for a one-stop shop for everything that we do in our jail, from commissaries, telephones, the kitchen. So everything in one vendor, we don't have to have three or four. But those RFPs will come out later. But this is the first one that we want to get undone now, because that contract expires in the month.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for the sheriff on this matter?
Mr. Ren, as previous discussed, there's no actual agreement in this, so it'd be based upon, at this point, the county manager's review.
It'd be subject to my review, county manager's review, and the sheriff's review with all sheriff contracts, because they can, this one's a little unusual in that the company is actually paying us. But there is some, the way the contract works, there's some money exchanged under the contract. Any contract that involves any expenditure funds, county manager also signs off on. So we have all three of our eyes on it. We're still actively negotiating the terms of this contract to make it comply with RFP and our needs. And this is not an unusual procedure. If you all recommend entering into the contract, we will finalize a contract that meets legal requirements. I'd also like to make clear that this type of contract isn't subject to statutory bidding requirements, but is subject to the Granville County purchasing policy. And I've reviewed this from Ms. Baird, and we both believe, at least I don't want to put words in her mouth, but I believe, we both believe that the process followed the Granville County purchasing policy, and certainly allows the sheriff to take into consideration things other than just the percentage of commission that's paid back to the county. It also does allow them to take into consideration the services provided and that type of thing.
Thank you for that explanation, because we didn't get additional documentation with this. So Mr. Ren was able to provide that prior to the meeting tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Based on that, I'll make a motion we approve with the caveats placed upon the county attorney. That, is it appropriate?
Yes, go right ahead.
At this time, we'll base the motion we approve with the caveats placed by the county attorney, and the review and the oversight provided within the agreement.
Okay, we have a motion. Here a second.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay. Our next item on our agenda is Vance Granville Community College appointments. And the purpose of this is to make appointments, reappointments to the Vance Granville Community College Board of Trustees. And pursuant to recent legislative changes in NC General Statute one one five D dash twelve and special provision in SL two thousand and twenty-three dash one thirty-four, section six point one OT, Granville County now holds three appointments to the Vance County Community College Board of Trustees. The school board's former appointment authority was converted to the county board of commissioners. Below is the current composition of the Granville County's representation on the Vance Granville Community College Board of Trustees. Dr. Darwin Howard, appointed by the governor, it's a state-level appointment under GS one one five D dash twelve. Barbara Cates Harris, appointed by the Granville County Board of Commissioners. This seat was formally appointed by the Granville County Board of Education. When Ms. Harris' term ends in twenty, June of two thousand and twenty-six, or earlier if vacated, the board of commissioners will continue to appoint this position going forward. Sabine Stovall, appointed by the Granville County Board of Commissioners, currently, current county appointee with a term expiring in two thousand and twenty-seven. And we have a vacant appointed by the Granville County Board of Commissioners. The seat was previously filled by Commissioner Russ May and is now vacant. Do we have a motion, or does someone want to put forward a name?
Mr. Chairman, I'll motion that Commissioner Cozart will fill the term of Commissioner Russ May.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor of approving Dr. Cozart signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations. We appreciate it. Commissioner Cozart, we appreciate you stepping up to serve on this board. And now we have our board, County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one brief thing that I would like to say. Last Friday was my three-year anniversary in this position with Granville County. I have enjoyed the work a great deal, and I learn from it every day. I also want to say that it is really an honor and a pleasure to serve this board and this community and this organization. We have so many strengths as both community and as an organization that I feel very optimistic about where we're headed. Commissioner Karen actually gets credit for reminding me that I had actually hit the, the three-year mark last Friday. He sent me a picture of, of me being sworn in, and I was mostly shocked at how little my kids looked. Three years for a teenager can make a lot of difference. Everybody's about a foot taller now. So, you know, time flies. But here is to many more good years of working together with board members, employees, and members of the community to make this organization an even better place to work and this community an even better place to live. Thank you.
And thank you, and congratulations. We didn't, I didn't realize it had been three years already. Time flies. Thank you. That's right. All right. And there are County Attorney's Report. And as I stated earlier, Attorney Ren's going to add some clarification to some of the public comments made. After the after the social media post last month. I forget when it was. It was the night of the, it was the day of the cog banquet, the awards banquet. But anyway, whatever date it was that they, we had a social media post, the next morning I sent an email to our planning, to Barry Baker, the county attorney and the county manager. And I asked three questions. What happened? When did it happen? And why did it happen? And I got an email back that contained those, and I'd like for Attorney Ren to speak to that. And any other comments he wants to make?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll limit my other comments, but I will start by saying I don't know these two young gentlemen. I respect their business. I respect their business skills. But I do know the grandmother of one of the young gentlemen, Ms. Linda Coley, and she's one of the people I have the most respect for in Granville County. She was my teacher for a couple of years, and I just want to make, make that clear. If anything I say here has the intent of, there's no intent to attack anyone. There's an intent to set the record straight from the county's perspective. I'll also say that I've known and worked with Barry Baker for twenty-two years. And during that entire timeframe, I've known Mr. Baker to be a gentleman. I've never known him to intentionally mislead anyone in any respect. He has a difficult job interacting with members of the public on complex matters. And I believe he tries to do that job with honor and integrity. I'm sure like all of us, he sometimes doesn't communicate things as well as he would like perhaps. But I don't believe there's ever been an intent on Mr. Baker's part to mislead anybody or to lie to them in any way. So I'll start by getting those two things out of the way. How we got here, in June two thousand and twenty-five, the county received a formal complaint about the auction activities taking place on the parcel of land owned by Mr. Anlo's grandmother. This parcel of land is fourteen point three acres, zoned AR forty, agricultural residential. It had no other type of zoning approval. This is a predominant zoning type in Granville County. And the activities, what the county found on investigating the matter is that there were large-scale auctions held multiple times per year. There was also onsite, onsite storage of auction equipment, and no permits had been issued for that activity. And so the type of activity that was taking place there was a commercial-grade auction, I think I would describe it. And there was no zoning approval. For example, Richie Brothers.
Can I, can I interrupt you for, for a moment? AR forty does allow for agricultural activities such as auctions?
No, it does. It doesn't allow for a, a commercial auction. It, it, AR forty allows for farming. It allows for residential use. It allows for certain things with proper zoning approval, but heavy equipment auction is not one of the things that would be allowed there.
So construction?
On a, on a permitted use basis for ongoing business. If someone had a farm auction to sell out their farm, for example, or an estate auction, you could get a special event permit for that, but it's not a permitted use in that zoning district, to my knowledge. And I'm a little bit of a disadvantage because Mr. Baker, the planning director, is not here, but I think I can say that with confidence that large-scale commercial auctions are not allowed in AR forty zoning district. Sure. Ask any questions, yeah?
So, so you can sell at this, at this, in, oh, yeah, AR forty, tractors, farm equipment, plow dishes and stuff like that?
Not on a ongoing commercial basis. In other words, you can't come into the AR forty zoning district, take a ten-acre parcel of land and conduct a commercial zoning business operation. If you had an estate sale or, or selling out, if a farmer was going out of business and wanted to sell his equipment, he could certainly have an onsite auction with a special event permit. But it's not the type of thing that would allow an operation like Richie Brothers or another large-scale auction business to come into a rural area and sell hundreds of pieces of equipment a day without, without further zoning approval. Now, keep in mind that all zoning matters are legislative in nature, and that's a matter that the board can take a legislative decision, decision on on a future date. But generally speaking, large-scale commercial activities are, the ordinance doesn't deem those to be compatible with agricultural and residential uses, because again, here you have, and this, the neighbors here, except the one who complained perhaps, seem to be generally supportive of this business. But I would think there are a lot of areas in the county near residential subdivisions and other residential uses in AR forty, where if someone was on a fourteen point three acre parcel of land, was selling hundreds of pieces of farm equipment, people might have a different opinion. So this is zoning countywide. And it is not a permitted use in agricultural residential zoning district.
It, just a couple of more questions. At any time, did the two owners of the auction or their attorney attempt to rezon the property?
To my knowledge, there was never any attempted rezoning of the property.
Okay. And as for the special use permit?
And there was no request for a text amendment, anything along that nature either?
So there was actually no special use permit ever applied for? There was inquiries?
There was a special use permit applied for.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll get to that in a moment. But there was no rezoning requests filed. And there was no request for a text amendment to change the ordinance to allow a commercial auction in a, in agricultural residential area.
Okay. And this, basically, the county had allowed this to go on until we had a complaint?
I don't know that the county allowed it to go on. The county doesn't have a zoning police who are out on patrol looking for violations. When we're made aware of a zoning violation, the county investigates it and, and looks into it. So I'm not, not aware that the county allowed it to, to go on. But it did address it once it was brought to the county's attention.
Once the complaint was filed, then the county addressed it.
Right. And that, many if not most jurisdictions do zoning enforcement that way. You know, you don't have the zoning Gestapo room in the county looking for violations. So again, when the county investigated the matter following the complaint, there was a finding that large-scale auctions were being held multiple times a year. There was onsite storage of auction equipment, and no permits had been issued of any type to allow this use. On June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, a notice of violation was issued. And so let's, again, I think we've just covered this, but let's go over what's permitted in AR forty. in AR-40. It is generally residential and agricultural use. Occasional auctions are allowed in AR-40. You can have up to two a year with a special event permit per piece of, per parcel of property. Storage of personal agricultural equipment linked to ongoing farming operations is allowed, but commercial storage for auctions and sale and that type of thing is not allowed. So again, covered this a moment ago, but continue to go through the presentation. While there was no earlier action, county zoning enforcement is generally complaint-driven. There are no, there are no routine patrols. When a complaint is filed, investigation and enforcement follow. We've heard a lot, it's air land. The county respects property rights, but zoning is a community agreement. Zoning has existed in Granville County since 1989 and the commissioners must enforce existing zoning laws. Zoning protects residential quality of life, agriculture of operations, public safety and fair land use. After the complaint was received, the county Planning Director discussed options for the auction company and communicated this to them in writing. They could apply for a special use permit and allow storage to support online and properly permitted onsite auctions. And the special use permit process includes public notice hearings and allows the parties to agree upon conditions related to that use. They can also, they were also told they could hold up to two auctions per year with special event permits. Because no appeal was filed, the company must obtain appropriate permits before continuing to use the property. And so I've conferred with Mr. Baker and he, he says that he did not tell them that, not to file an appeal. Again, I think people, I'm not accusing them of saying anything untrue. Sometimes people have different perceptions, but Mr. Baker hasn't, did not tell them from his perspective not to file an appeal. I've worked with Mr. Baker again for 22 years. I've never known him to give any applicant legal advice. Yes, sir?
So this was done verbally, not through emails? When you say?
There was a notice of violation issued that, that clearly specified.
But the verbal part was?
Well, the verbal part was apparently verbal. I don't have any knowledge of what was verbal, right? Well, I wasn't there, didn't observe it. And again, I'm going off of Mr. Baker's word, just, so. Since August 4th, 2025, which I believe was the last time this matter came before this board, the company submitted a special use permit application on September 9th, 2025. So they were notified of the notice of violation back in, let's see, June 2025, June 11th was the date the notice of violation was issued. They submitted their special use permit application on September 9th, approximately three months later. The Planning Department reviewed the application, including requesting input from the Department of Transportation on transportation-related aspects of the application. The Planning Director sent the following communication to the company's attorney on September 25th, 2025, requesting clarification of certain items that were not clearly addressed in the application on the site plan. And based on my knowledge, the reason that the Planning Director waited between September 9th, 2025 and September 25th, 2025, which was, you know, less than two, two business weeks, I believe, was to get clarification from DOT on what, what types of uses were allowed on those roads. And I'll get into that in a moment. So here's the communication to the applicant's attorney. Please find below comments regarding the Granville Auction Company's major special use application. And I'll go through these and I'll explain them. Number one, pursuant to Granville County Land Development Code, Section 32-1138, the land development administrator finds that the proposed land use is a storage land use defined in Section 32-1308E of the Land Development Code. Here, the Planning Director was simply stating the finding that allowed this to proceed with the special use permit process since the use is not specifically defined or allowed in AR-40. The applicant understood it was applying for a special use permit for a storage use per the notice of violation and as stated at the public meeting in August before this board. And again, one thing I want to tell you as I go through this letter is that this is a type of response that Mr. Baker provides on every application of this type. So every application comes in, he provides comments back, and this is a normal type of communication. Number two, minimum zoning setbacks, replacement of any item associated with the storage land use should be 50 feet street, 25 side and 50 feet rear. He was just making clear to the applicant in this communication that the setbacks are those shown in Land Development Ordinance, Section 32-262, Table, Table 4100B. This is simply advising the applicant of the setbacks that needed to be shown on the site plan. Number three, the site plan needs to illustrate at minimum compliance of screening standards 32-264 of the Land Development Code adequately screen the industrial land use from residential zone properties. And so this is the area where he was waiting for guidance from NC DOT because NC, the, the ordinance states that if it's on an arterial or collector road, it has to be totally screened from view. And so Mr. Baker had requested, as I understand it, two things from DOT. Is the road in front of this property an arterial collector road? Because he needed to know, did that trigger the screening requirement? And then the other question he asked was about the driveway permit requirements. And so the screening shown on the application and site plan that was submitted was not clear. The application noted the language from the ordinance, Section 32-218, that requires invisibility from the public right-of-way for collecting arterial roads. The Planning Director checked with NC DOT and was told that DOT does not define the road as arterial collector. So the Planning Director here was advising the applicant that only the minimum requirements for screening and industrial use from a residential use apply, not the stricter invisibility screening standard. Here, he thought he was providing a benefit to the applicant because the site plan suggested they thought that the invisibility standard applied and he was making clear that it only required the, the less restrictive screening requirement. Paragraph four, how many trips per day will your land use generate? Need this information provided by applicant to assess whether a traffic impact analysis is required by 32-683. Land Development Ordinance, Section 32-683, requires a traffic, a traffic impact analysis for certain developments. A traffic impact analysis would only be triggered by non-residential use that triggers more than 800 trips per day. This was highly unlikely given the storage use, but the Planning Department requests this information from every applicant rather than guessing. NC DOT also recommended this question be asked. NC DOT will have to review the application as part of the driveway approval process. So here again, he wasn't telling them to do a traffic impact analysis. He was simply asking how many trips per day so he could determine whether one needed to be done.
And how were they to provide that? Would they just provide that based upon their estimation?
Right. There's no other ways.
So they could have said 25?
As long as, I mean, they could have said 25 as long as there's a reasonable estimate of the trip, so, right.
Okay.
And that's, and again, this was for a storage use. This was not for an ongoing auction use. It wasn't asking if they had two special events, how many, how much traffic would be there in those two days. It was asking how many trips per day it would be triggered. Number five, the next question or next comment was, Section 32-11012 of the Land Development Code contains the following standard for the issuance of a major special land use permit. Access roads or entrance and exit drives are or will be sufficient in size and properly located to ensure automotive and pedestrian safety and convenience, traffic flow and control and access in case of fire or other emergency. The storage land used denotes a change of use and will require driveway, driveway approval from the North Carolina Department of Transportation if the major special use permit is issued prior to receipt of the driveway permit from NC DOT. The zoning permit allowing the use will not be issued into all driveways or approved by NC DOT for connection to the state road. This was simply a statement of fact, again, informing the applicant that NC DOT issues the driveway permits and that a required finding in the ordinance was that access roads would be sufficient under the, to meet the, the flow of traffic from the site. He was further just making them aware that even if the special use permit was approved, they had to get their driveway permit from NC DOT. That's just simply a state law requirement. He attached the environmental disclosure checklist. So number six said, attached environmental disclosure checklist must be filled out and submitted to the Planning Department. And this environmental disclosure checklist has been used to gather information about non-residential development for over 20 years in Granville County and existed prior to Mr. Baker coming to Granville County. It's required of all non-residential applicants. It was not anything that required them to do anything other than to fill out a checklist, as I understand it. And if I'm nitpicking anything, that certainly could have, they could have been made aware of that earlier, but I don't think from Mr. Baker's perspective, it was a particularly time-consuming requirement and again, didn't require that they do anything other than fill out the checklist. Number seven, minimum of five off-street parking spaces plus 0.5 per thousand square feet of gross floor area is required to be noted on the site plan. The parking spaces must illustrate compliance with Article 12 of the Land Development Code. So it's again, minimum of five off-street parking spaces plus 0.5 per thousand square feet of gross floor area is required to be noted on the site plan. We're not aware that they planned to have any gross floor area there. It wasn't, I don't think Mr. Baker was 100% clear from the application, but we weren't aware of there being any structures to be built on the property. So I believe all he was doing is making them aware that they had to show the five off-street parking spaces. And the narrative under there states, this is noting requirements of Article 3, Table 03110B, off-street parking standards for specific uses. The parking spaces must illustrate compliance with Article 12 of the LDO. Likely they would have had to have only provide five unpaved spaces unless they planned to build a structure.
So not paved, but unpaved?
That was our understanding based on information we received on the site plan. And I went over this extensively after we received the communication. I went over part of it with Mr. Baker prior to him responding and went over this extensively with him to make sure we were clear on why we got the reaction we did from the applicant to make sure there wasn't anything hidden or confusing in here. Number eight, please illustrate floodplain that is on the property to ensure that no land development associated with your storage use will occur because of this proposed land use. And this comment was to assure compliance with the floodplain ordinance. They only had to show this on the site plan and that information is available on GIS. Obviously, you know, development is prohibited or restricted in the floodplain and Mr. Baker was simply saying, letting them know there was a floodplain on the property and please make clear that you're not going to be conducting any uses of the property inside that floodplain. Number nine, is there impervious surface proposed? The property is located in the WS4 general watershed and the maximum non-residential impervious surface is 36% of the land area of the property. This was a simple yes or no question. We are not aware of any plans to pave or gravel any substantial area, but Barry was simply making them aware of the requirements. Some types of gravel count as impervious surface per state regulation. So again, he was asking simply, is this area that you intend to park this equipment on going to be impervious or not? And then he, the 10th question said, please provide an electronic version of the revised site plan. Please submit the revised site plan as soon as possible. Please note the Development Review Committee will meet, will review on October 1st and may have additional comments. So that's the sum total of that communication. Again, from my sum up of the situation, the company was conducting a heavy commercial use in an area zone agricultural residential on an approximately 14-acre tract that was not in agricultural use. In other words, this wasn't in deferred tax status. There's no indication that was currently being used as agricultural property. Not that that would necessarily make a difference if it were, but that's also been an argument. It, it was not, to our knowledge, being used for an agricultural purpose and there was no claim of agricultural exemption that I'm aware of. Staff took enforcement action in accordance with the terms of the Land Development Ordinance. Staff worked with the company to identify a path to compliance. Company waited nearly three months to submit a special use permit application. County staff reviewed the application, including seeking input from DOT and provided comments to the company in 17 calendar days. The comments provided to the company were standard questions and easily addressed, which would allow the company to be on the October 20th, 2025 agenda for approval of the special use permit. And again, the final thing I'll say before I take any other questions you have is the Planning Department is often put in the job of not being the popular agency of county government. They're charged with enforcing your ordinances, just as a sheriff's office is charged with enforcing the laws of the state of North Carolina and the, and county ordinances dealing with other issues. And so just like law enforcement isn't always popular, the Planning Department isn't always popular, but their job is to enforce the law as it's written and to treat all applicants consistently under the law. It's not to bend the law or give someone a pass. And so again, I've worked with Mr. Baker a long time. I don't take him to be a dishonest person and I've never known him to intentionally make anything difficult for an applicant. I can't speak to what was said behind closed doors. I see Mr. Phillips is here. I'd ask him to offer any corrections, anything I said or any comments he would like to have since he's Mr. Baker's direct supervisor.
You addressed it clearly.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. And I'm happy to take any other questions or comments from the board.
Does anyone have any questions, comments?
I do. So I have not spoken to, to Mr., to these gentlemen regarding this matter. So it was our understanding, as I understood it, that until this matter was resolved, completely resolved, this board was, because it could be a quasi-judicial matter, that we were not to speak about this. And of course, and even though they withdrew the application, we weren't provided any further guidance other than not to discuss it until we were absolutely certain. That's, that was my understanding. I mean, I don't think the board.
I haven't, I don't think I've instructed the, the entire board that they could speak to the applicant. I seem to recall, but don't recall who, somebody asked me at this point, since a special use permit had been abandoned and it was no longer a quasi-judicial matter, could they speak with people about the application? And I, I believe I recall telling someone, but I don't remember who, that that was fine as long as they were speaking about the matter generally, since the special use permit application had been abandoned. But at this point, there's no restriction if you want to talk to the applicants, anyone else about this process, assuming they don't intend to reapply for a special use permit. I wouldn't speak directly to anything regarding the special use permit standards itself. And I would, I would just, I'm sorry, let me just say this. I would keep in mind that considering they had an active quasi-judicial application, withdrew it. Just, again, this is a tension between being a legislator and someone who may have to hear something in a quasi-judicial manner. I would just keep in mind that, try not to say things in a manner that would show clear bias, that would affect someone's rights and impartial decision-maker in case you're act, ask to act on it in the future.
I was just responding to the regards that why Commissioner hasn't reached out is for everything you just said.
Right. No, and clearly.
It's not that we didn't want to speak to people, that not want to discuss in detail with people, but, but we are limited on what we could or could not say. And, and, and so it places commissioners in a difficult situation to where you want to be responsive to constituents and people's concerns. At the same time, it could easily become overnight a quasi-judicial matter should there be reaplication or anything to matter. So, and so it's not as simple as just saying that we didn't care or we didn't desire to discuss it, but we, there's a fine line we were asked to walk.
And I will make clear to you and the, the public at this time that up until the time they withdrew that special use permit, that absolutely given this board the direction not to engage in discussions about this matter because it would come before the board on October 20th as, as a quasi-judicial matter. And, you know, there's, I'm happy to, at any point, take any criticism, anybody who wants to level my handling of this matter or any other one, but one thing I value is the rule of law. And I believe every person has a right to an impartial decision-maker and that's what the law requires in this case. And I believe in treating everyone who comes before this board fairly and intend to try to instruct this board to set a process that, that ensures that.
And I believe at some time there was a discussion that- And I believe at some time there was discussion that if we did try to contact or talk about this matter, because it was quasi-judicial, that we would have to recuse ourselves. Anyone that participated would have to recuse himself. And there was a imminent problem there that you might have three or four commissioners that would have to recuse themselves. So I took it as, you know, we can't talk about this until the special use permit comes up.
That's correct.
And I wasn't, I wasn't aware that they had actually withdrawn the special use permit. I was aware that they didn't go through with it after, in time for this meeting, but I wasn't sure if they were, you know, going to go through with it for future.
Well, and I don't know that we, based on the Facebook post, I would assume that's the case. But I don't know that anyone has completely telegraphed what the future plans are.
One thing I, was mentioned during the public comment I don't want to get away from because, you know, we, social media is going to take this and fire it as however they want. You know, and obviously, the steps that are, normal people would go through to open a business or assume that normal people would go through to get, open a business, I mean, aren't always followed. I mean, auctioneers are licensed by the state of North Carolina. I mean, you would assume that, someone says they're an auctioneer, that they've got the appropriate auction. But the sales tax thing that came up, this board is in the process of putting forth a referendum to the voters, for them to decide if they would like to have a point-of-sale tax added to reduce the amount of ad valorem taxes that may come in the future as a possibility, as another venue for taxation. Not that we're, this board on high made a decision and changed the taxes. And if a person is in a business and they understand how taxes are collected, they would know that that's how that works. So I just want to make sure that, you know, people come in here and drop a bomb about not understanding how tax values, taxes are collected in the state of North Carolina and how the Department of Revenue remits those back to the county and how that's involved, was kind of insulting. But, I mean, we're going for a referendum for the people to decide on that tax. Just want to make sure I say that a couple of times.
There's been no sales tax increase.
No change at this point in time.
For the people to vote on.
So, because tomorrow morning, we'll all wake up to the fact that we changed sales tax rates. So just want to make sure I say that a fifth time, referendum to the people that vote.
One hypothetical situation. Yeah, they, we heard about how much revenue this company was producing for the, for Grahamville County. If we were to look at it as a board, look at it from that perspective, purely based on the revenue they were bringing in and say, we're going to circumvent all the rules and we're going to do whatever we need to do to keep this company here. What would, what's the legal ramifications for the board?
I'd have to think about what the full legal ramifications for the board are. But if your sole goal for allowing someone to break the county law is revenue, you would lose all legitimacy as a board the next time you tried to invoice a zoning regulation anywhere in the county. And again, there is a rule of law and the purpose of it is to provide a consistent playing field for everybody who deals with a similar subject. And I'm sure money, tax revenue, money's important to everyone. But money at the expense of consistency, rule of law, and common fairness doesn't make sense to me. I'll let you all make the decision on that. But there would come a point where I wouldn't represent you if that's the way you made decisions.
Well, and thank you for your honest answer.
Well, so I want to make sure that to, through any process in the future, again, I'm not going to question, it's not my role to question what the county attorney and... There's been leveled some allegations that people lied and that people were betrayed and were done wrongly. Of course, obviously, I think that disturbs all of us, that those allegations existed. What was said tonight, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, and I want to make clear, I'm not making any allegations against those gentlemen.
That's, 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 exactly. And so my point being is that, you know, when people, people, you know, have things invested and things don't go necessarily the way that they'd like to see them go, you have to kind of take those things into account as you walk through the process. What I, I guess, what I'm trying to say, the best way I can say it is that I don't think it hurts us as a board when we see things from a zoning or an ordinance perspective that may be improved, that, that we don't have those sit-down discussions with the county manager, county attorney, Mr. Baker and Scott, and figure out a way, you know, a path, that there's a path available, it's not a path available not. But at least, I think we have to tune our ear to being conscious of, hey, this didn't work out. There might be other people might want to pursue something like this, but how do we, how do we deal with that in the future? And I'm not saying that we did anything wrong. I'm not, and I'm beating up on them and I'm beating up on us. But I just think we ought to, maybe there's some things we need to review. Maybe we could have done something different. Maybe, I'm not saying we could have, but I'm just saying, I just like to find, when these things come up, we just have to make sure that we've done everything possible, and I think we have, to see that things work. But at the same time, maybe step back and review our process and say, can it be improved? That's what I'm getting at. Can, can we improve it? If it can't be, it can't be. But again, I understand it, what Mr. Ryan explained. I see the legal aspect of it, and that's what we have to follow, and I get it. I'm just trying to find a balancing point again. Maybe, you know, because it is a legislative, it is a legislative decision as a board, we can address. So, and I don't know what the right, I don't know what the right answer is, but I'll end it there.
Any, any other questions for our attorney, any other comments on this? Jim, you have any other thing, anything else to say?
No, sir.
Thank you. Now, based on our adjusted agenda, any other matters? Rob?
Cut this on. Mr. Chairman, approximately ten months ago, myself, Commissioner May and Commissioner Cozart were invited to tour the courthouse, Grahamville County courthouse. We met with Clerk of Court Yancey Washington and Chief Justice, I believe is his Superior Court Judge. Chief Superior Court Judge, thank you. Judge Dunlow was also in attendance. We spent a couple hours touring the, going the outside and the inside of the courthouse. Clerk of Court, Mr. Washington, led us on a very in-depth tour. Court was in session at that time. We also went outside. He showed us safety concerns in and outside of the courthouse. We sat with him and the three of us said we would look into this. We saw the need for the security issues. The security issues have been addressed. We addressed those tonight with the support and the, full support of the board in the approximate hundred and forty-five thousand dollar addition of cameras, doors, key cards, and other aspects. I received a phone call from the Clerk of Court last week and asked me, could I come then to the courthouse? I did. He took me on about a two-hour tour. We discussed the history of the courthouse along with other issues. Explained that we were in the process and thought that it would be voted on tonight, that we would increase the security budget. What has not been addressed is the maintenance and the upkeep of the courthouse. He, in that tour, and I have pictures, and I have, I believe, all the commissioners had them and I gave them to the county manager. The courthouse is our, probably our most important building. That's where wheels are probated, deeds are transferred and recorded, along with other things. You think about the court system, but there's a lot more going on there than just the court. What I saw was absolutely appalling in the condition of our courthouse. Carpeting, furniture, ceiling tiles, paint, the lack of cleanliness, which will lead us to a work session about the current contract, I'm sure, with the company that we have contracted with. It's in a, it's not falling down, but the condition of it is absolutely appalling. We're not going to get money for a new courthouse anytime soon. I don't care which party is controlling the purse strings in Raleigh. I don't see us getting twenty million dollars or more. So we need to upkeep and take care of what we have. And it is, this has been a year, almost ten months since we looked at this. I am, the funds are available that we can allocate, and I am going to put forth a motion that we allocate in this budget year, twenty-five, twenty-six. They are, they presently have fifteen thousand dollars budgeted. And I'm going to ask, and I welcome comments from other commissioners, that we budget and the funds available up to a hundred and fifty thousand. And then we start the process of what needs to be done. And let's get it going to let these folks know that they feel neglected. They feel like they're in an echo chamber. There are emails being sent, not answered. And I just feel like this is a building that is too important, that we let it go to the state of despair that it's in right now. I welcome any comments from any of the commissioners.
I toured as well, two times, and agree with the current condition is reflective of our board, that we should do better. And there are some thirty-plus odd employees in there, not to mention hundreds of people a day. And carpet cleaning's not going to do it. And it's time we invest it in the appropriate upkeep. And so, what, based on what I'm hearing you, you say, Commissioner Williford, is that you, a hundred and fifty this year, but we will absolutely continue this discussion on how we would do it for additional years, based on the need assessment done after that point, to see what we can do to finally get it to where we need it to be after this fund allocation.
That is correct. I would say this would be a start. Let's see what this gets for us. And then next budget year, we, we allocate again what is needed. And it could be a three-year process, probably will be. But yes, sir, you're exactly correct.
Mr. Chairman, I surely support the motion that Commissioner Williford put out, or the comment he made about a motion. I'm just very concerned about what seems to be quite a bit of neglect. It doesn't represent what we want in that courthouse. A term was used that a bug had been watched and he'd taken up residence for two months. There just has to be some kind of oversight and follow-up of what's going on over there. I think maybe there is some immediate oversight of the maintenance that will at least give an appearance. But I would like to also ask in addition that we get an update on this probably at least every month or two, just to kind of see what's going on. Because I'll be honest with you, I was really surprised to see after ten months some things that were lingering and the condition in that, in the courthouse. So I surely support and I saw firsthand a reason for us to act and to act tonight.
We have done plastering work, Gary, we've done painting work. You know, I think that there's been some carpet cleaning done this past year. I mean, no, the, the money that's been appropriate is probably not sufficient for doing everything that's needed. But I just want you to understand that, you know, we do, Gary's crew and myself, you know, continually working the courthouse, trying to keep them happy, which honestly, personally, I think is impossible to do. So just for the sake of what I do and for what Gary does, it's not like this building is neglected. We do work in this building. So I don't know, you had a walk-through with Yancey Washington, but I just want to recognize the fact that, you know, we do work in there every year, trying to keep it the best we can. Yes, there are issues there. And I'm not sure when you talk about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It depends on what you want to accomplish in the courthouse and whether is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars going to be sufficient. I mean, if you want us just to paint walls, you know, and make it look better, sure, we can do that. It may go a little bit deeper than what needs to be done in the courthouse, which means it's going to take considerably more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And Scott, that's exactly what we just discussed, Commissioner May and I. But he said himself, this would be the first of what could be two or three more in the next three, two to three budget years allocations for the upkeep. And let me make sure that, I have a great relationship with you and I respect everything that you and Gary do. But what I saw, when I have pictures that I took, the carpet is not in good shape. The furniture is not in good shape. We have visiting judges, and I'm not going to back up from anybody on this. We have visiting people that come into that courthouse. I would be ashamed to have, you know, when they come from other counties. No, it did not look good what I saw.
Oh, I'll agree.
And, and I have pictures, and I'd love for you to see them. Mr. Board, I'd love for you to see them. My, my point is, my point is, there's fifteen thousand dollars budgeted right now.
That's for carpet and furnishings?
It won't touch it.
I know.
Won't touch it.
You can put all the money you want to of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars there, but if you're not, give us the budget to clean this carpet, you're going to continue to replace it all the time. And that's, I've been fighting this since the day I took the director position over at this county.
Well, we've got, we've got carpet cleaning funds.
That carpet, I looked at, looks like they try... Looks like they...
I can prove that.
Now, I think the, you know, we, we're...
I've actually got the picture.
You know, we're waiting, we're waiting for, you know, the space needs assessment and master plan to come through, which highlights, does concentrate on the courthouse before we make recommendations on spending bigger money in the courthouse. We want to find out exactly where that money is best spent, rather than just going, going off whims of, we need to add this and we need to add that. Well, okay, we hear you.
Why can't we allocate the money and then let you do that? Why do we have to wait to allocate the money?
Oh, you can allocate the money.
So what I'm saying is, is that...
I just, I disagree with throwing money at the problem.
We're not throwing money at, we're allocating, we're allocating...
Please, I think we should have the problem assessed, have some concrete numbers to work with, and then we throw money at the problem.
Well, allocating and spending...
Without, not without having a plan in place of what you're going to do, when you're going to do it, and how you're going to do it.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, we met ten months ago. Now, we're going to wait ten more months? That's your, I mean, what I'm saying is allocating the money. Not that we have to spend it, but it's there available if it's needed to. That's all.
I'm good with that. I mean, look, you know, we, we work, we work with what you provide us to work with.
And that's not a lot.
Yeah.
You know where I was that Sunday? In that courthouse from seven o'clock? In that courthouse from seven o'clock in the morning to four that afternoon, replacing every emergency exit light in that building and all the fire extinguishers, because the judges will not, not let us come in there and work during the day. That's what Yance is not telling you. And when all of you guys walked around with Yance, if why wasn't one of us two with you guys? So, we can defend ourselves, but right now, it looks like I'm not doing my job in maintenance.
Nobody, nobody said that.
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
There's a cleaning crew.
You're not gonna convince me no other way.
Okay.
Because the, you put the money there.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm allocating for.
Five, five or six things get passed through the sheriff's department tonight. You can put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in.
That's, let me, let me, let's, let's get some clarity here. That money passed tonight was OIFoid money, which comes from a different funding stream altogether. Doesn't come from the general fund balance. Number two is, I was in that courthouse, and it was filthy, filthy, absolutely filthy. And you know what? I could smell the feces, okay? It's wrong. So, you got carpet that is beyond any cleanliness, beyond it, okay? You show me what you got, I know what I saw.
And I, I'd like to make a comment. I've never, I've never been in that courthouse but about one time in my entire life, and I've lived in Grandville County since nineteen sixty-three. I worked for the federal government thirty-seven years. You could've walked, sir, in any post office I had, the floor was always waxed and cleaned. And if the people that were paid to do it didn't do it, you're looking at the man that done it. I apologize. I haven't thrown one ax across at the maintenance department. I know you guys have a very limited staff. But what I saw today was the cleaning crew that we have awarded a contract to, to clean this building. It's not even sweeping the floors in this building. There were gum paper on the floor. In the main courtroom, there was paper still on the seats from last week when somebody was there. It's not anything to do with your department.
Yes, yes, there is.
I don't get, I don't see highest reflection. It's a reflection on the people that are supposed to clean up that building. You, you don't have the contract for cleaning up that building.
We're working on it, we're working on it now. We have an actual meeting tomorrow about.
We have a judge in that building. Do you know, do you know we have a judge in that building that won't allow the cleaning crew to come in there and empty his trash? Because the two people that do it smell like reek of marijuana.
I ran them out like the, the other night and told them not to come back to one particular guy. Because I'm down here nights and weekends, but don't, Yancey don't see this.
I, I understand, I'm getting it from one point of view. But I, I can see with my own eyes, Gary. I, I see. Some of the current, some of the carpet needs replacing. Some of it can probably be cleaned. And that's what Mr. Yancey said today, some of it could probably be cleaned. He wasn't, he didn't say one thing about the maintenance department of this county. And you can get mad if you want to. Hey, I'm mad too. I'm hurt that we have people come from outside of our county and sit in those rooms. There are chairs in there that there's black duct tape on, taped up.
I would agree.
And they sit and ramble.
I was just made, I'm not, okay, but generally, I handle capital projects. But, you know, things like furnishings in the courthouse, I wasn't really aware that we were responsible for buying the furniture for them.
I wasn't either.
We, we bought some courtroom chairs. I have ma, I bought courtroom chairs for them. But for, you know, staffing desk and, and task chairs and stuff, I wasn't aware that we purchased those items for them. I'm believing now that we, it is our responsibility, you know? So, yeah, I mean, I will agree that there's some issues. We've, I think David's worked real hard to try to get the janitorial service contract. It was gonna be a, what we thought was a better way of doing business. I do understand that the janitorial company has not been working the best, although I don't know how well they've been managed. I believe that we're working, I know that David and Karina and Gary and that group have been working with the janitorial firm to reinforce our anticipated needs and outcomes. So, you know, I would imagine that's being handled as we speak. But back to the point, yes, there are deficiencies in the courthouse that we've all known have, have existed. Some of it's physical, some of it's the cleanliness, things that need to be done on a day-to-day or week-to-week or month-to-month basis. I would agree. I've been an advocate. You clean carpets. The more you clean a carpet, the less you replace that carpet. We don't clean carpets. Not only in the courthouse, anywhere in our facilities, we don't clean carpets. That's a problem. We replace carpets. Doesn't make sense. So, yeah, I mean, we're kind of looking at it in different, moving forward, we're looking at things differently. Gary's got a little bit more expanded, expanded bandwidth now with assistant director. I think they can probably start looking at things more proactively than reactively now. Let's hope so. So, some of these items that have been neglected in the past, carpet cleaning, for instance, could hopefully be taken care of.
And if I could jump in, I think that's why Commissioner Willoughby brought up the topic that he did. I do understand staff sensitivity, because I think historically, the resources haven't been there to do probably what needed to be done. And there's no time like the present to start making a change i- in, in the right direction on that. And so, I think whatever the, the board seems in support of, staff can certainly, for example, if it is another hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars this year for a total of a hundred and fifty, we can certainly figure out the, the best ways that we, we believe. And, and talking with the, the stakeholders in the courthouse, which again, that's been an ongoing conversation, right? We have been in conversation with them, but.
Met with them a couple of weeks ago, you know, and, you know, that was prior to the meeting, the recent meeting with the janitorial service, which I had, I got an earful. But, but yes, I think that, you know, with additional appropriations, you know, we can look at, we can move forward with the plan on how to better fulfill their desires.
That's all we're asking for. I don't think, I think it's all we're asking for. And this is no reflection, and I've known Gary Bowen for all my life.
Gary does a great job.
I know he does. And this was not a reflection on his duties. If I'm not mistaken, we hire a, we now have a cleaning firm. So, if the reflection is on that firm.
Exactly right.
That is not on Gary. I'm sorry he took it that way, and I'll tell him that when I see him.
And I understand you all don't clean carpets. I wouldn't ask you to clean a carpet. I wouldn't ask you to wax a floor, sir. But what I think the county does need to do is award a contract to somebody that can do that kind of work and get it done and make that floor look presentable in that courthouse. I wouldn't dare ask you to do it. I'd do it myself before I ask you to do it.
I'm done.
We need to come to Jesus. Well, I mean, come to Jesus. We need to come together. We, we know we got a problem.
Amen.
The county manager and who, and Scott and, and Gary and the, and the crew and everything, come together and find out what we need to do, and let's do it. And bring the brack to us and let us know what we need to do at our, at our next meeting.
I asked Mr. Washington that today. I said, "Look, can you give us a prioritized list?" Because none of us go to the courthouse, I don't think. We don't know. Give us a prioritized list of the things that need to happen. For instance, cleaning crew, clean up the paper that's left there in that building. Sweep in the floors. There's gum in there on the steps going up. Now, I'm not getting into a whole lot of the problems that are at the courthouse, because we here tonight or probably in the next ten years are not gonna be able to solve that. But I asked him today, would you prioritize a list of things? Give it to us. Let us get with the appropriate people to find out what to do, how to do. After a certain amount of time, you come back to us and say, "We're progressing here. We're deficient here," and let us know. Because I don't have time to go to that courthouse and wander around every day. But I, I encourage any citizen in our county to go there and walk around that courthouse and tell me if you would like for your home to look like that place looked today. I won't talk about the break rooms that are in the bathroom. I won't talk about the judges that have to go up and down the same corridors as felons do. And the ladies that are in there with rapists walking up and down those stairs, our employees that have to share the same hallways with those felons and with those criminals that are in that building. I won't say anything about that, because that's something that's got to happen down the road the next ten or fifteen years, whatever we can come up with a timetable. But what I'd like to see done is things that nothing do with your crew, I don't think. But that cleaning crew, we can start with that and get qualified people in there. And that's what I thought we were doing when we voted for this cleaning contract, where we had a reputable company that could go in there and clean that facility. But evidently, I was wrong, and I apologize to the citizens of this county for that. But I tell you what, I'm gonna do everything I can to rectify that. And I apologize to those people working in that courthouse today. I wouldn't have my wife work in some of them office buildings. And if you'd have your wife work in there in some of them office buildings, I question you. That's all I'm gonna say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Scott, I just want you to know, what I'm voting for tonight is to give the resources to put in place what needs to happen. We all know, know of your work, we know what you've done. And what we think is, and what I think I'm almost sure, we use some contracted services sometimes in some other areas of work. And it's hit and miss. Some of them, they come in and get a paycheck, some take pride. We even went back in a case to having people there during the day who we could put our hands on to take care of things. So, the wide range, I think the, the money is there to, what I'm gonna vote for is give flexibility to be able to have the resources.
Well, I'll certainly, I'll work with general services to see, you know, if I can assist them and anything they need to have done is I'll always have.
Yes, sir.
My objective was not to ridicule any employees or, or you, you, Scott. But, but I would tell you, my, my eyes aren't lying when I looked at the building. And so, I don't know why we would object to having an initial funding and, and then assess, and then we have additional funding the next year. I, I just don't see a delay to get something moving when we know it's needed. And if it's too much money, I'm sure we will provide it to another area. If it's not enough money, then we have another couple of years to assess it. But, so that was, that was my point to it. It was like, I'm not beating up on people. I'm just saying that this board, every county building in this, in this, every county building is a reflection of whatever board of commissioners are sitting here. It's, 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 it's where we fund. Are we funding, are we giving the right amount of funding to take care of what needs to be taken to make it presentable for the public? The public puts a lot of money into all the resources that they buy. We should take care of it. And so, that comes back to us. Just like we've talked about before, gentlemen, when we talk about school funding, sixty million dollars in deferred maintenance. We can't sit here and innocently say over the decades that it's been perfect on our behalf, and it's all the school board's fault. So, my point is, is that we have an opportunity here to create a better working environment for some county employees and people to go to work every day in a very, very difficult environment. It's not all, it's not all rainbows and sunshine to them. And so, and, and again, we can provide our county director there the resources he needs without having to back up and come back. And if, again, that's, that's the approach is, is like, we have the opportunity, let's take advantage of it.
One question for the county manager. This money we're talking about, whether it's a hundred and fifty or a hundred and thirty-five, whatever figure we pull out of the blue, where does it come from?
I think the most likely source of that funding would be our general contingency, which we have only touched a little bit of this year, so it's still pretty healthy.
Okay, good. The thing that concerns me is we don't need to haphazardly do this. It needs to be done in a precise, concise method. We need to figure out what the priorities are for the people who work there, what their priorities are, address those, and you know, let Scott and his, and, and his people come up with a comprehensive plan, and we'll see how much we need to put towards it each year. Hundred and fifty may go a long ways towards it. Hundred and fifty may not cover. There may not even be a down payment. We don't know. Let's find out how much we need.
That's fine. Mr. Chairman, I'd still like to make the motion, and I think we agreed if we have it allocated, that doesn't mean we have to spend it, but it's available to be spent. Right now, there's fifteen thousand dollars. That's what's in the budget for that. So, I will make a motion that we, we approve up to another additional one thirty-five, which would give us a hundred and fifty. We follow through with the recommendation of, let's see what's needed and you, and go from there.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, I, I do think that the, the appropriate kind of flow of this would be, I think it's okay if the board makes a kind of a conceptual commitment tonight. We would need to bring back a budget amendment for a kind of official approval of that. And as I think was mentioned earlier, staff can come back at the November work session and, and at least give you the, the beginnings of a plan for what, in consultation with courthouse stakeholders, what we would plan to do with the additional funding.
So, what I'm understanding, County Manager, is, is that there was a pre-audit done that the funds are available, so we can approve the funds tonight, correct? And then a budget amendment will follow?
Susan, I'm sorry, Jennifer. Getting disoriented tonight. Is any reason they can't do a oral budget amendment to appropriate the sum of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from the contingency fund? I mean, normally, we always have a written budget amendment. But do you know of any reason they couldn't appropriate that amount from that particular budget, budget line item? I don't, I don't think the money's gonna get spent any quicker if you bring it, if, if the vote is for a direction to bring that back for approval at the November third meeting. Is that, does that please the board?
Commissioner Willoughby, would you like to amend that to, let me get this straight, amend that to direct the finance department to come back to our next meeting with a budget amendment in that amount?
Yes, that'll be fine. So, I will amend the motion that we put it on the November third meeting for the finance department to come back and amend it with where it should come from, contingency or wherever.
A budget amendment.
Budget amendment.
I second.
Okay. Now, any, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. And now, we're down to the end here. Did we have anything for closed session tonight?
I don't have anything, I promise.
Okay. Well, good. We're, we're down to Commissioner's comments. And first off tonight is Commissioner Jay.
Thank you. I just want to say one thing. If you know something else coming up like this problem came up tonight, please let me know before I come here and want me to vote on something else for a note. Because I, the first time, that's the first I heard of it. And when, when the pictures come through, I didn't know what the picture was all about. Please let me know when we get here. So, please.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Willoughby?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin?
Believe it or not, nothing tonight.
Commissioner Cozart?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to publicly congratulate again Mr. Xavier Werther, my friend, on his Presidential Lifetime Service Award. One of the things that happened at a dinner to honor him on that, when they had the door prize drawings you, you drew to volunteer at a place of, of his interest. Families Living Balance Free Boys and Girls Club or something like that. And I ended up getting drawn. I never win anything at a drawing, but I won that one. And so, got a chance to, so I thank Mr. Werther for that. And also, just excited about some things going on with our Grandville Health System. The Endoscopy Center would be opening soon over on Lewis Street. Cat scan area, there will be, we broke walls today. So, really feeling good about the, the future of our hospital and hope it will be there to serve our citizens of our county and surrounding areas for many years to come. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart. Commissioner May?
No, sir.
All right. Commissioner Karen?
I'll just mention one thing very briefly, so you can get it on your calendars. November eighth will be kicking off the parade season this year in STEM. November 8th will be kicking off the parade season this year in STEM, but the Veterans Day Parade, Thanksgiving Day Parade and Christmas Parade all rolled into one. That's all I have.
Is that, that, that's probably one of the most efficient parades in the, in the county.
I get it.
Thank you.
I'll give you an exact time at our next meeting, but it's earlier in the day because later in the day Oxford is having one as well. But I'm not 100% sure on the time, but I will get that for you.
Good. Okay, thank you. And as, as for me, we, we talked a lot. We heard a lot from Grandma Auction Company. We talked a lot about their situation tonight. And, yeah, I know Perry. He's a really nice guy. I thank the world of him. And these guys started an auction business and it took off. Neither one of them expected to grow as fast as it did. And it outgrew their ability, I guess, to keep up with the, the legality of things. You know, they started off at, at the grandmother's property. And it was a quite low auction to begin with, but it exploded. And, you know, when they talk about the Person County Welcome Room, from what I understand, they had the event at the Person County Drag Strip, which has to be zoned, has to be grandfathered in as some type of industrial commercial zoning. So it's not like they were doing it in a AR40 district. And also based on their post, they seem to have either bought or moved to Greenville, North Carolina and have an auction going there. And I wish them all the best. And, you know, I'm sorry things didn't work out the way they thought they should work out. And, you know, I hate it to come to this, but, you know, if they find a piece of property and they want to rezone it here in gravel county, we'll certainly work with them every way possible. Don't see, there's no animosity on my part towards any of them. And I just, I wish them all the best. And with that, we've already covered. Any other matters? Do you have something?
Just like the, I'm stopping, we have their annual banquet tomorrow night. It's done at six o'clock at Pleasant Road Baptist Church.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Jay. Appreciate that. So I think that concludes our business for tonight. We don't have anything for closed session. We're entertaining a motion to adjourn. We got a motion and a second. I don't think there's any discussion on the motion. We'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you all.